Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 4th, 2024 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight. We have not had any public comments registered. So our first item of business is our public hearings and recommendations to counsel. Item A is a zoning application for approximately 8.17 acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway to be rezoned from HI Heavy Industrial to CH Commercial Highway. Athena Hospitality Group is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. As you can see on the map above, this is the zoning map for the project area. The area designated with the red dash line is the official application we received from the property owner to modify the zoning designation from the existing heavy industrial to a highway commercial. The yellow properties above it are those that we were looking into for further study, whether or not those made sense as well from a planning standpoint. When you're looking at the properties in total in our comprehensive plan, they are all designated as a general industrial use. And we do have a transition policy that talks about compatible zone districts for that comprehensive plan include our industrial districts, a planned industrial district, as well as some other GI, and on a case-by-case basis, other districts, whether it's a heavy industrial or a highway commercial use. So when we looked at this particular one and we talked with the applicant and Mr. Harney, we've provided an updated use table as far as all of those properties that we investigated a little bit further. And tonight, we put on your dais an additional email letter of support for modification to some of those adjoining properties. So as you can see here, the gas station, convenience store, there's actually an email stating that they would support them changing their property to CH, as well as the Taco Bell site. And then the other vacant site that you see here on the interior is owned by the same property owner as the main application, so they also supported it. And the one tonight you received is this one on the corner. See if I can click on it, if you can see where I'm circling. That's known as the Onate Property. They also support a zone change. And the only one we do not have a written confirmation is the Waffle House property, which is here, kind of wedged in the middle of all of those districts. So when staff looked at it just from a purely, you know, planning perspective and our existing policies, we would be supportive of a zone change to all six parcels, so it's a little bit more coherent and harmonious when it comes to buffers of uses or buffers in landscaping. And by that, what I mean, and I went ahead and included it in the report, is when you have a highway commercial use, there are certain zones, uses, that would no longer be allowed in those, which would include vehicle repair, automotive body shops, motor vehicle sales for medium heavy-duty vehicles, crematories, gun sales, livestock auctions. So when you think of all those kinds of land uses, whatever is in that heavy industrial, these are types of uses that could be right next door to a new highway commercial use which is being proposed. So based on those kinds of properties, and additionally, they'll have additional buffer requirements. So if you're next door, whether your CH building next to an HI or that HI comes later, you have to build buffering, huge buffers on both properties at those property lines. So thinking again through that, whereas if you're in the same zone district, CH, next to CH, there's just your regular perimeter planting requirements. So that's why staff would be supportive of a zone change for all six because of those reasons. And it seems to be more contiguous in our transitional area policy, but really, it's going to be a question for Planning Commission to evaluate and determine whether just a single parcel or multiple parcels meets really our transition policy. Additionally, we're asking one of our attorneys to go into a little bit more detail in regards to individual parcels versus a larger group of parcels to further go on through things before we have a public hearing on the item.
Yes. Good evening, Commission members. At our last meeting, the Commission expressed interest in evaluating rezoning solely the applicant parcel as opposed to the larger study area that Ms. Smith just discussed. So I'd like to give kind of a quick primer on spot zoning, which should be the potential concern with this. Spot zoning was defined by the Tennessee Supreme Court in Grant v. McCullough as, quote, "The process of singling out a small parcel of land for use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area, for the benefit of an owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners." The Supreme Court later explained in Fallon v. Knox County Board of Commissioners that spot zoning is disfavored because it does not bear a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and is out of harmony and in conflict with the comprehensive zoning ordinance of a municipality. That being said, that does not mean that every instance of rezoning a single parcel to a district which is different from its neighbors necessarily constitutes impermissible spot zoning. As explained in multiple appellate court cases most recently in 2023, the cases City of Orlanda versus Robertson County, the most important factor in addressing a claim of spot zoning is whether the rezoned land is being treated unjustifiably differently from surrounding land, thereby creating an island having no relevant differences from its neighboring property. So with regard to the subject parcel here, as set forth in the agenda, the subject parcel and the parcels immediately surrounding the subject parcel are all zoned as heavy industrial. The subject parcel is seeking to be rezoned to commercial highway, and there are other commercial highway zone parcels within a few hundred feet of the subject parcel. Per the zoning ordinance, the commercial highway district is intended to permit development of general commercial uses in a linear fashion along highways and near industrial areas, which this constitutes. While the future land use map does list the most appropriate land use character for the parcel as general industrial, it specifically states that other zoning districts may be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Moreover, none of the immediately neighboring parcel owners have objected to the rezoning request, and in fact, several neighbors have expressed interest in having their own parcels rezoned to commercial highway. Indeed, the other parcels in the study area are all presently or proposed to be commercial uses, including a convenience store and restaurants. Given that, it doesn't appear that permitting the rezoning of this parcel would be detrimental to those surrounding property owners, and it would not be out of harmony and in conflict with the comprehensive zoning ordinance as the Supreme Court laid out in Fallon. Additionally, the applicant here provided information at the last meeting indicating that several of the surrounding property owners were particularly excited about the proposed development, which is an extended stay hotel. Several of these surrounding owners have out-of-town visitors that frequent their businesses for extended stays, so this use would be particularly beneficial to them. If the Planning Commission were to find that the construction of an extended stay hotel would be beneficial to the city's general welfare, for example, because of a lack of sufficient hotel or extended stay hotel capacity, that would be an additional reason to permit the zoning request. So that's kind of a very brief primer on spot zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but essentially getting down to brass tacks, it seems here it would be permissible if the Planning Commission were to find that rezoning this parcel to commercial highway would serve the general welfare of the city as opposed to just benefiting that one parcel owner.
Thank you, counsel.
You are very welcome.
Any questions or comments before? Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
So no other questions. We are going to open our public hearing on this item. We'll ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak, either for or against the item. If you come forward, please state your name and address at the podium, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. So at this point, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
I'm John Harney with Park Trust Commercial, and I'm here representing the seller of the property. And although it was talked about when we were setting up the public hearing date, don't know if it's been talked about tonight, the reason for this rezoning is because under their present zoning ordinance, a regular hotel is allowed in heavy industrial, but an extended stay is not. To be honest with you, I didn't realize that was the case till we got pretty far into this. Actually, had the site plan approved for this hotel and moving toward building permits, that we realized that extended stay was not allowed. We got actually a Comfort Inn approved a year and a half ago over on the Elam Farms Parkway side, and got it all approved. And then the applicant or the person going to do that had a serious illness, and we let him back out of the contract to finish it. We're back with this extended stay hotel request, which requires this rezoning. Our company did basically the whole park there at Joby Jackson years ago. This area was originally zoned light industrial. And when we sold to Key Oil Company that bought 12 acres just to the interstate side and sort of back behind this, Key Oil Company stores and sells lubricants for all the car dealerships, Quicklubes, manufacturers, that sort of thing. So they have some big tanks of lubricants inside their building in the back. Well, by ordinance, the only zoning that that could be done in was in heavy industrial. So the staff at that time recommended we zone that whole area heavy industrial. I can't remember exactly, but I know some of the commercial uses had already been built in there, but they were allowed by the heavy industrial. So fast forward to where we are here tonight. I polled a lot of the users and businesses in the Joby Jackson area, got emails from Swan Cosmetics, from Amazon, even Barrett Manufacturing up at the next exit. They're all excited about the chance to have a hotel there where their employees, staff that come in to train, for example, Barrett's now owned by an Australian company, so they have groups coming in for a month at a time, working with that company. They were excited about the possibility of a nice hotel being on this side of town, where most of, a lot of people have to go usually to medical center to find a hotel room that they want their staff to be able to stay in. So this is a benefit to the whole area. I have not talked to anyone that was opposed to it. As, you know, the staff asked me to solicit the surrounding neighbors, and she's got the emails and the confirmation on that. But I think this will be an asset to the area, to this side of town, and certainly willing to answer any more questions that you've got about it.
So, John, I think it was said in the last meeting that the folks that own the Waffle House were not against the rezoning, but they didn't commit to that they wanted to be, let me back up. They weren't against this parcel being rezoned, but they didn't commit that they were okay for their parcel to be rezoned to commercial highway. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. They said they weren't in opposition to the hotel company.
Yeah.
They just weren't going to commit to, they wanted their parcel rezoned.
Okay.
Is basically what they said.
Okay.
But they said they weren't in opposition to the hotel.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
But the rest of them are open to having their parcel rezoned?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure I'm thinking correctly. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Harney? Thank you, Mr. Harney. Anybody else would like to speak tonight on this item? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Let's see how everybody feels about this one. Questions and comments?
I think we should approve all the ones that said it was okay and leave Waffle House out of the mix, since they didn't...
And leave them as a spot zone?
Leave them as a spot zone.
But they're not opposed to it?
They're not opposed to everybody else being rezoned, but they didn't say they were okay being rezoned.
I mean, it seems to me the Commission can do either. As far as zoning is concerned, you do not need to have the consent of the property owner to rezone the property. That's only for annexation. And so if the Commission were so inclined, you could decide to rezone the entire area, notwithstanding Waffle House withholding their consent. They're not, they didn't necessarily object to it, but that also wouldn't necessarily be an impediment to rezoning. But you could also just rezone everything around the Waffle House. I'll leave it to planning whether that would be an issue to have, you know, this one parcel of heavy industrial surrounded by the commercial highway zone. But that certainly would not constitute, you know, there'd be kind of reverse spot zoning, right?
Reverse spot zoning.
Which isn't a thing, so you don't have a problem there.
But then, does it require the buffering and those requirements? Because it's kind of, again, the opposite.
Right. It does seem to me that anyone that were to build on the parcels touching that Waffle House would have to have that extra buffering, because it would be a different zoning district, I think. But I'll leave it to Mr. Harney.
But it's going to be the other way around.
So, yeah, so the Waffle House being already under development, they're grandfathered in under the plan that they were, that they were approved, but the two adjacent parcels to the, to the west, the Onate Property and the property that only has frontage on Elam Farms Parkway, they abut that property, and they would be required, when CH abuts HI, each side is required to install a buffer, a landscape buffer. So there would be a buffer required on the Onate Property and then on the property that fronts only on Elam Farms Parkway.
And it's going to have to be a more substantial buffer, because they're buffering the heavy industrial piece of property.
I want to say that it's, I want to say it's a type A, type A buffer. So it's our, it's a 10-foot-wide type A buffer.
Mr. Harney, did you have something else?
In all fairness to the Onates, of course, they bought their parcel two, three years ago with the intention of putting a restaurant there, but they haven't done so far. When I explained to them about the rezoning allowed them to still do a restaurant or whatever, I certainly didn't explain to them that if this happens and you leave Waffle House industrial, that it's going to put a bigger burden on their property from a buffering standpoint. I didn't explain that to them. I don't want to...
So that would maybe change the game.
Yeah. I mean, it would make sense to me, you do whatever you want to do, it would make sense to me to rezone the subject property, the Shell Station next door, and Taco Bell. All three of those have asked and agreed to do that. And since Waffle House hasn't agreed to, it looks like those three, that takes care of the spot zoning issue, and that doesn't put a burden on the Onate Property, because I didn't explain to the Onates that this could make a bigger burden on them from a buffering standpoint.
I'm good with that.
That's where I'm leaning as well. I mean, we have a need for hotel space, we have a need for extended stay space. This is an up-and-coming area, and it's a good place to put it, so.
I agree.
I would make a motion that we rezone the subject property, the Taco Bell, and what do we call the other one?
The Shell.
The Shell Station.
The Shell Station.
Commission Store.
Thank you.
Second.
Just the three.
Just the three.
That does still, the southern one that only adjoins whatever the little cul-de-sac areas, still touches then one of the properties that we're talking about.
So, that's correct. So the portion of that property that abuts the Taco Bell property, they would be required to construct a type A buffer, although I believe that there is a driveway that crosses a part of that, so, or no, it goes straight to the Waffle House.
There is a back access road that wraps around them, but in that case, that's the same owner.
Yeah.
As who's selling the hotel site.
Right.
So I represent them, so I don't, that's not going to be an issue with them having to deal with that buffer on theirs. They're the same seller as the hotel site.
And so then, we're talking, that owner will have differing, they'll have one commercial highway and one heavy industrial. It's the way this motion would put it. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Questions?
Good. I like it.
Okay. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Sabrewater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Shout out all the extra help from everybody. Thank you all. Okay, so moving on to item B, we have a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of two segments of East Northfield Boulevard right-of-way. Harry and Smith Contractors, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Again, good evening. This particular property, we showed you last time around, it was actually tied to the Northfield Acres Plan Development Project. And as we were looking at that one and working towards a site plan review of the application, there were these two remaining rights of way that there are currently driveways that go into the site that were preserved, I think, when the city might have done some work on East Northfield. The new project has different locations for those drive access points. So we did look at a mandatory referral for those areas, but as we had suspected and were confirmed with some of the other utility companies, there are underground and aerial utilities in these areas. So what staff has suggested based on that particular information is that the city retain easements for public utilities in those two areas. So you basically change the NFE ownership of it, so when they're locating buildings and those setbacks, those setbacks are based from property lines. So that way, it would be incorporated into their site. And then when they have their new internal access areas, they'll record those all as access easements, but we would retain these, because I think there's also sewer in that area. MTE's not going to move their above-ground utilities. So based on those responses, we would recommend approval with the following conditions, that one, the applicant shall prepare and submit legal descriptions and exhibits necessary for city legal to draft any necessary legal documents; two, the applicant shall be responsible for recording those documents and paying the associated fees; and three, that those two right-of-way areas retain public utility easements over the entirety of those two areas, with those new easements being recorded by deed simultaneously. So that basically, you don't remove one and then not have the other one in place. This was noticed as a public hearing for those property owners that are in proximity to this. We have not heard any other comments on the project.
Okay. Any questions before we open the public hearing? If not, then we will open the public hearing on this item and ask if anybody's to come forward that would like to speak. Anyone? Okay. We will close the public hearing. See if we have a motion on this item.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Sabrewater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes our public hearings for the evening. We have staff reports and other business, and we do have one item there tonight. Robert Rose Drive Commercial, this is the third re-subdivision of Lot 3 and the second re-subdivision of Lot 2, final plat for two lots on 5.7 acres, zoned CH, LI, and GDO1, located along Robert Rose Drive. City of Murfreesboro is the developer. Mr. Blomley?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. We have one plat on the agenda today, and we, a little bit of a time-sensitive plat, so we wanted to get it before you as quickly as possible. This is for the city's property along Robert Rose Drive, where the Water Resources Department will be moving to later on this month. That property was comprised of two separate lots of record, and, or the property with the building on it was one, one lot of record, and then the city acquired another lot where we, you know, where we built the Gateway Boulevard extension. So this plat re-subdivides those two lots and dedicates the right-of-way for Gateway Boulevard. So there will be one large lot on the east side of Gateway Boulevard, where the Water Resources Department will be located, and there'll be one kind of remnant lot on the west side that is separated by Gateway Boulevard. So there was a similar plat that went before the Planning Commission back in 2023, but it did not include the right-of-way, so we have included this on the agenda tonight, because it's a significantly different plat than what you saw in 2023. There are a number of comments that need to be addressed. Those have been included in the agenda materials, and we would recommend that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments. And Mr. John Gordon with ELI, the engineer and surveyor on the project, is in attendance if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? Mr. Halliburton, you puzzling over something there?
I'm just trying to figure out where all this is. I don't have any questions.
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments. Does staff have comments on its own project? That was my question. That's why I paused.
Ironically, we do, so.
Okay.
Subject to yourselves.
So we have a motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Sabrewater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. I'm guessing we have some other comments from staff tonight.
Very, very briefly. It's coming into the end of the year. I'm sure all of you have nothing else going on in your lives and have been keeping track of your, of your training. You know exactly how many hours you have, how many hours you need. But just in case you don't, Ms. Jacob and I will be sending out updates to you in the coming days, so you know exactly how many hours you need. And there's that four-hour Planning Commission training that we are expecting any day now a video to be sent to us so that we can forward it to y'all, and we'll get that to you just as soon as possible.
We're waiting for that too, Mr. Blomley.
Oh, I'm sure.
All of those with zeros up here are waiting for that.
Well, I know that, I know that none of y'all have zero hours, so.
I'll follow in the sword. I got zero. For the length.
Me too.
I think you're exempt, actually.
No, I did some.
Tristan's exempt, right? No? Okay. I tried.
I got some.
Nobody's exempt.
I'm an overachiever.
But that's all I've got.
Okay, we will work on our training hours, Mr. Blomley. Any other staff reports or any other business? Not, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.